That we talked for probably about an hour yesterday and then right after that I spoke with Beth Coughlin. So both of them kind of pretty much wanting to know what our magic crystal balls were saying. They had accountants, you know, their accountant is saying that the reductions could be as much as 20% and that, you know, they should consider preparing for worst case scenario, which we all know it's always good to prepare for worst case scenario. Um, but I talked to them and said, my concern is I can't recommend voting a worst case scenario of even 10, 20, or 5% reduction in chapter 70 money when the legislators have made it very clear, they're not going to tell us by June 30th. They're not going to have the budget done. They're still haggling, it is crickets from the actual legislators. Everyone else in the world is, in Massachusetts, is predicting how bad it's going to be. But it's not going to be pretty. So what Erin and I have been doing across the district, um, actually, you know, when I need to rewind, I'm so sorry. So I filled it in on that. Um, and said that we were having this meeting to talk about reductions for next year. Um, and you know, they're still haggling back and forth as to when to have their town meeting. You know, I made it very clear that if we talk and I was going to present the problem with Brookfield and a couple of other of my towns, if you all remember, Brookfield was getting a bump up of chapter 70 because of the Student Opportunity Act. So that's what we built our budget, assuming that those original numbers from the governor in January would live. They're clearly not going to live. Um, that consensus, the only consensus with the legislators is what the governor put out has been thrown out. They're starting from scratch, trying to figure out how little money they'll have. Um, and, and everyone, everyone's crystal ball is saying Student Opportunity Act is not going to be able to be funded this year. That that would be the first thing, if it's something new additional money, um, that they simply don't have it. So that leaves Brookfield with a very, I would say almost guaranteed reduction of $124,000 to bring it to the level. Um, we think the very best case scenario, and not likely, is that the towns get leveled chapter 70. Uh, we're building scenarios at 5% cuts and then just opening the cover to a 10% cut because when we get there, all of our districts look very different than they do today and it's really bad. So those who are crying, the sky is falling in and it's going to be a 20% cut. I did say to both Beth and Steve that I need to try to be Sally Sunshine for a minute and say there could be a 20% cut in the local aid number, which is the, you know, the little general pot of state money that goes. The chapter 70 is the enormous figure. So I, I don't think it's going to be 20% cut. If so, I mean, all bets are off. But we're not going to know that by June 30. Um, what I do think, I am quite confident and have told um, the two of them that I would present to you. They've not seen this list, but I told them I would be presenting to you what it would take to get. And again, I guess I'll rewind across all the districts we've said in all fairness to all the towns. Whatever gets cut from the January chapter 70 figure, we should own. We schools should own because it's school money. Our towns already fund over minimum contribution and no one has extra money to fill the void because the towns are also going to deal with their own general state money reduction and the fear, the local receipts of people not paying real estate taxes, not paying the various other little revenues in town and, and the worries about that. So we're going to have to own whatever happens with, with school chapter 70. Unless it got so bad that it was bringing us to below minimum contribution, which is, is not going to happen. That's hundreds and hundreds of thousands, probably almost a million dollars. Um, so, but that being said, I feel quite confident we're going to end up at least at level funded chapter 70. So given that, um, I'd like to go down and certainly Kathleen can chime in on occasion. Uh, this is the list that the three of us came up with that we would suggest reducing to get to that level funded chapter 70 world. And then not vote anything lower and pray that it doesn't go to a 5% reduction. But in all honesty, I don't know how the state gets out of this without a cut in chapter 70 somehow. When they're looking at five to seven billion dollars short in revenue. Any questions on that run on before we start going down the list? So to get to, oh, and by the way, I think you've all saw the, I think it came from the selectmen, the, the email that we're asking all departments to cut.
Yeah.
At least 5% from the budget, not the chapter 70. And they have no free cash. Uh, not that it's a huge surprise, but I think everyone saw that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So that was the catalyst to, aside from the normal COVID lack of revenue problems, Brookfield has other fight, had other financial problems no matter what. Um, so if I go down and at least just try to explain what some of these are that I, I guess we are recommending we do, we take and, and deal with this to get us to best case scenario. Um, the first one, for those of you who were on the call last night, the joint meeting, that is the impact to Brookfield Elementary's budget to reduce that central office position that we did vote last night, the coordinator of student support services. So Brookfield share is the 6498. So that's a done deal. We took that vote last night. We spread that out to all school districts. We, we, we're going to back that out of the budget. Um, the next item, we've had a retirement since we built this budget. And I'm not, it might have even, it probably since the first time we rolled out. I forget the date of the notification, but uh, one of the office admin assistants is retiring. So knocking down, this is actually a combination of knocking down a little bit of the daily hours. I think is it half an hour or an hour?
An hour a day.
So just decreasing an hour a day, but also planning on bringing someone in entry level or within the first two steps of the pay scale as opposed to the senior salary, the top of the pay scale that she's leaving at. So those two adjustments can save us the $13,000. Um, next we've looked at the federal grants and you have academic coaches, you have a literacy nap and science coaches that we can legitimately pay for from the federal title two grant that we again are going to assume isn't all of a sudden going to disappear next year. Uh, we've not heard that at all. So I think that will continue and we can pay for those stipends out of the, the, the district wide grant. Um, next is the suggestion that of course, the hope and prayer is that it's for one year. This is all a two-year problem at least, but we're hoping for just one year. Instead of replacing um, the library tech retirement with the certified teacher that's in the budget, we recommend that we go with an instructional assistant model, which we do have in place in two of our schools of our five elementary schools and is working pretty well. Um, and that would save 30,481. Kathleen feels pretty confident that she's got a qualified person or two that she thinks would be interested and could deliver those services. Um, while certainly not at the exact same level as a certified teacher. Um, an FTE for an FTE schedule wise would probably look similar to the same. And um, just being a little bit of a different model with an instructional assistant instead of a certified. Um, I'm going to know as we keep going, the cliffs that we built. The cliff there would be, we're hoping in year two to get that teacher back in. But the only way that happens is if we get $30,000 more, let that happen.
Yeah. Um, at least 25. It would be at least 25 to bring a teacher back.
So, um, then on a professional development level, usually every year we sort of combine a pool of dollars from every individual budget to pay for guest speakers, present, uh, presenters or supplies, et cetera, for the two full day professional development or any other, sometimes it doesn't have to be those two days. If they're district wide activities that are great for all staff. We fund that by getting funds from every school. So clearly next year, we're not saying we'll do no professional development, but we won't scoop up those funds and we will look for in-house folks who have become experts in, in various areas such as running remote uh, Google meets meeting and doing remote teaching. Um, so we cannot collect that $4,800 from the Brimfield Elementary and just work within, and who knows? You know, as Dr. Nusica said, you know, who knows when push comes to shove, if those full PD days are really needed for PD or for something else. You know, we couldn't need to turn them into a student day if all of a sudden we've ended up with a lump of time that have gone remote again. Uh, the fiscal 20 rural aid balance is exactly what that says. If you remember at the beginning of the year, we were informed, we were getting rural aid. Um, and we were just waiting to get through the year to figure out what we were going to do. You know, how we were going to spend it. Um, we're that, the, the state has confirmed that we can roll that money over. We're not getting new rural aid next year either. That's another. If I'm a betting woman and my crystal ball looks pretty clear on that one, that we wouldn't be getting rural aid. Um, but that is money that can roll over. So we're saying we've just got to use that as a um, a, a pool of reserve funds to pay for something in the operating budget. Therefore, reducing the operating budget, it could be anything. We, we probably end up charging, you know, part of a salary there just because that's the biggest easy one journal entry charge. Um, we do still have the next two items in the budget. Even though this year unfortunately, we never solidified a legit warrior welcome event that, that would have required some chaperoning and payment for it. We certainly hope to get back to that next year. Um, but that is certainly a to be determined. So we're suggesting at this point in time, we, we just eliminate that pool of dollars for stipends for chaperoning. And unfortunately, but I guess fortunately in Brookfield, um, the SRO did not completely kick off. Um, that no one has gotten SRO training yet in Brookfield. So we, that did happen in two of the other towns. So we helped pay for the training and in some cases um, pay for hours for SRO to be in the schools, both elementary and secondary. But while we want, we love that model and hope we can get back there at some point in time. It clearly appears there are other priorities for the next year or two. So we would suggest taking that out. And then this last group of things are things that we have had the luxury of having to, having funded by school choice. They've been on your capital plan. Um, even though they're not necessarily capital items for a couple of years. Um, but I think I have highlighted at least for the last two years that if things got tough, those are things we simply might not be able to continue to pay for. Um, that they would either not exist at all or that we could offer them at, at a, you know, at a family, if the student paid, family paid. Um, and that would be the after school enrichment, some additional classroom supplies and the sixth grade trip in general, which Brookfield is completely paid for in other towns. What, even if the, we turn that to warrior welcome, if we can get back on board with that. Plus whatever little single day sixth grade event would happen. If we can do it, um, we would just have to make that an individual family paid event like another field trip. Um, at least for the next year or so. By not doing that, it would give me the comfort in saying it's $34,000 more of school choice money that we can put towards operations instead of on that capital side of the, the, the shoot right now. Um, again, it's a cliff. Um, if we, if we let go of those items for a number of years, it's not as deep of a cliff because we had it in that capital plan for a few years. So we're really just moving those school choice funds over. But really the way to get to this 125, 846 reduction, a good chunk of it is reserve funds that are one-time funds or we're going to start depleting our school choice. Um, I think we're okay for, for a few years, given, you know, the lines that we have to come in for school choice. Um, but I think these are the best bad choices that we can make right now in our recommendations. Um, and, and again, as we ask you all to, you know, comment on or give us our questions, the net result here is a reduction of 125, 846, which would bring the new budget request um, that we are recommending tonight for the 3,146, 409. That would not bring us to the level that the town. And again, both Steve and Beth have slightly different interpretations of when they asked for a 5% reduction. If I take a 5% reduction from the budget that was on the table that we asked for, we'd have another $49,000 to go. I think if we at least put this out there and, and I've tried to change their mindset to being whatever the chapter 70 reduction is, is what we should be held responsible for. Not this random 5% of all budgets request. So I think we could get there at least for now. We don't know what the end of June brings. We don't know what July and August brings when the state finally settles. But numbers to keep in mind, if we did reduce the 5% from the budget we were looking at, they would have been asking for another 49,000. If we have to go to the point where we get a 5% reduction in chapter 70, we'd be looking at another 79,000 in reduction. Which, you know, we've started having conversations, not in deep detail. Um, at that point in time, Kathleen kind of shuts down a little bit. You know, we really do have to have that talk.
You mean when we start talking banned and we start talking all of that lovely stuff?
It's clearly staffing. It's clearly staffing at that point. Cause we've squeezed everything else and we cannot pretend that we can't teach, that we don't need supplies and textbooks to, to teach. We can't pretend that we don't need to turn on the heat and, and keep the boiler, the, uh, the boiler running. Um, so there really is not a whole lot of place to squeeze there anyplace else. Questions on the items? Or issues or disagreement with the items or other suggestions?
I mean, it's not, it's not great. None of it is great, but they, they feel they feel like the right types of things that we can do to try to save a little money without having to get really drastic or having to start talking about teachers.
Yeah.
Um, which again, I think should be our top priority as best as possible.
Thank you.
And that was our thought too. And we're not feeling good at all, but we at least feel like, again, it's year one. It might be plugging a hole in the dam because I worry about if we have to do the same in year two. I don't have that rural money anymore. We do have a little more school choice to probably keep that going for another year or two. But there are some items here that's like, okay, this is one-time savings. I'm not going to have that again. But you know, we do have to take this one year at a time. Um, we just can't vote $100,000 more of school choice because then next year we're, we're in a complete disaster when you need 200,000 of school choice and it's all gone.
Yeah.
So if there are no other questions, that all being said, then I would recommend that the committee vote to reduce the FY 21 budget request to 3,146, 409. And that we make the adjustments in the areas presented here.
All right. So I'll make a motion then that to reduce the fiscal year 21 budget to 3,146,409 with all the reductions that were discussed earlier.
Second.
Holland, uh, why, this is a roll call. So Hill, yes?
Cunningham, yes?
Um, yes.
All right.
Okay. Uh, and yeah, we will just keep having conversations about what, you know, where we would recommend to go if things get worse. But I can promise we're not taking any votes until the state legislators have finished their job and told us for sure where we are. So we're likely going to end up having to have meetings um, over the summer um, to talk about it when we do get answers. Um, as I've said many times, so I apologize if I'm being redundant. Even if we get this number, when we walk out of town meeting, we're not immediately going to start spending it. Because until we know what the state's doing, we don't, we, we just, we have to go slow. Um, we, we won't, we won't buy a year's worth of supplies, a year's worth of copy paper. Um, you know, even all our technology or whatever until, until we have more answers in case there's someplace else that we could squeeze. Plus, I mean, we, we have to prepare for a whole lot of things come.
Right.
Um, so while I have you, one other thing that I promised, um, Beth, I would bring up. She also presented a current year problem the town is having um, without pointing fingers, but pointing fingers. She was certainly gracious enough to say the health insurance line is apparently significantly over this year. She said, I, you know, I'm, I'm hearing that there is a lot of movement in are not unanticipated additional school employees. Well, I, I'm not offended by that because of course it's school employees. School employees is the biggest part of your, your payroll and your insurance seekers. So, but she certainly does say, I suspect, she said, I, you know, there, there certainly could have been lack of communication and lack of proper budgeting in the accountant or treasurer's office because they have turned over so much in the last couple of years. Um, so I certainly said to her, I said, Beth, I'm not offended at all. Did we add more positions over the last couple of years? No. Would I be shocked if one or two of our people that left didn't have insurance and someone that came in does and did take it? I wouldn't be surprised at all. Would I be surprised if someone came on because they had a life altering event and had a spouse who wasn't eligible for insurance? Not at all. So I'm not surprised at all if a lot of the shortfall is because of school employees that they didn't plan on taking insurance, taking it. But that's fine. All said and done. So she respectfully was asking, have you got any money but this year? That can help us with this problem? So I, I was feeling good again. I said, tell me how, how deep is your problem? She said she thought the problem, and again, said, I'm not sure if I believe this report or that report. She thought the problem was $25,000. So I felt pretty comfortable in telling her, well, yes, what? I'm looking at our latest finance report. I've already told the school committee that we negotiated $13,000 in transportation savings and that the right thing to do when all was said and done was to make sure that was sitting there to turn back. I was also looking at a substitute line that had $11,000 left on it.
Great, great.
So I was like, you know what? Coincidence or not, those are the two big line items that wasn't aligned utilities. Which segue worries me a little bit that I didn't have a lot to save or even a few thousand to save. That next year if we were full throttle, I'm not sure what's happening there. But the net meaning credits vary a lot too. So I told her that I would recommend to you folks that you commit to having $25,000 left there, which is actually pretty damn close to where we would be when we were talking before, um, even if we remember you voted up to $150,000 of school choice. If you did that, when I look at our report right now, we're probably pretty close to that 25. That would involve nothing from you folks right now, other than just kind of a verbal okay. Um, then she emailed me an hour later and said, I'm so sorry. I was wrong. The hole is closer to $80,000. I know we're not asking that of you. She said, but if there's any way that you could get closer to 30 to 35,000, we would be extremely appreciative. So I'm sharing that with you and I'm saying the only thing that if, if, if you are so inclined, what I would say is you'd probably have to take a vote to say that you are committed to having $35,000 left to turn back to the town, even if that means another more than 150,000, which is what you voted to put towards operation, which my gut is would be no more than 10,000 more come from school choice. So I'm asking you folks to, to, to talk that through. She certainly isn't going to look, look a $25,000 gift horse in the mouth. But she did come back and say the problem is bigger than I thought it was. Anything you can do to help would be appreciated. What is your thought, folks?
I, I don't, I guess my feeling would be 25 is pretty good.
Uh huh.
I would hesitate without some sort of good faith on their end of maybe, I don't know. It's hard. I'm sure to, to see something, but I don't want to just turn over money just because they're saying they're short. I'm not doubting them.
Yeah, no, I agree. And, and yeah, I, I bet they are, but we know the town has had a lot of fiscal issues. Um, I am thrilled with who they have right now doing the accounting and I told that to both um, Steve and Beth, that that was the best move the town had made is to have that firm and specifically Lori, who also does the accounting in Holland. So I knew ahead of time that, that she could. But I also know that they've, they've really struggled trying to get through the tangled web of Brookfield, that it is a mess to untangle. So you know, I don't know when all is said and done, if there's more work to be done and they're going to find more free cash money. I don't know.
And I think maybe the, I don't know, my, my opinion maybe is somewhere, maybe we meet halfway and say 5,000.
I was going to say the exact same thing. If we want to say, you know, in a good faith effort, we'll promise to leave up, leave 30,000. Then yeah, I just split the difference. We're being as good faith as we can be. Um, without, uh, obviously, you know, I keep reminding them, we can't set ourselves up um, to have bigger problems in a year or two. We're, we're in this catch 22. I know you need the help now, but you also need the cuts next year. And you know, we might be getting through it with more school choice. So we can't go too deep. But we all know it, we're pretty, we're okay there right now.
Right. So does that need a vote tonight then for this one or?
Um, a gentleman's agreement, so to speak, I think would be fine. I think the only vote would be is if we got to June 30th and I actually need more than $150,000 to get the job done. Um, I would think at this point, by the way, your town is all over the place with your town meetings. So, um,
Yeah, we still don't have one on the.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you the latest. They have gone back.
I rely on you to tell us.
They're on the back, they've been back and forth today. But here's the latest as of 10 o'clock last night, which was their meeting. So two days ago, Karen is moving from the 26th, letting go of the 26th and wanting it on the 18th and 19th. They've been looking at the 18th and 19th of June and 26th as another option. That Karen let go of the 26th, said lock us into the 18th, 19th. Last night, they want to let go of the 18th and 19th, lock into the 26th, but only to open and close the meeting and delay it until July 22nd and 23rd. So, which I was really bummed because when I talked to them earlier, I thought they understood. If you don't get this thing done by June 30th, you could put someone in a 1/12 budget mode that you don't want to be, like the Board of Health.
Right.
But, um, that being said, I did full disclosure respond that the 26th is certainly still available. That the 23rd and the 24th of July are concerns for two reasons. Most importantly, we just announced last night that graduation is going to be on the 24th. So while graduation is not going to be indoors, we fully anticipate the week leading up to a graduation like we've never had before in a virtual world and needing to set up, that we would probably have a lot of that. that we would probably have a lot of activity going on in the building, in cafeteria, in auditorium to prepare for graduation, so that was a problem. And then I did say, while camps are not definite, they're also not definite, they're def- they haven't been said definitely not yet for summer camps, and if we do get the okay to have any kind of summer camps in July and August, we would absolutely be using the, the, the big areas to spread out, like the auditorium and the cafeteria, and I would be concerned with having any kind of camp activity during the day and not be able to appropriately clean the auditorium and turn it over in time for a nighttime town meeting. That being said, I'm not saying no way it can't be in July. We only said, no way it can't be on those particular days leading into graduation. So now they have something to think about again for another week and decide whether they wanna push it through on June twenty-sixth or pick another couple of days in July, and, and it is what it is. We offered to host them, I'm not gonna say, no, we can't, even if we have some camp activity, we'll figure out if that's really what they wanna do. But to be continued, I guess, a little bit longer. I think they meet, are they every Tuesday? I think they meet again next Tuesday anyway, so Karen will share that information with them. I believe the moderator is doing a tour of the, um, high school with, with some committee members on that same day. So maybe we'll know for sure next Tuesday night.
He's meeting, he's going over on June second.
Yeah, that's, that's next Tuesday.
Yeah, with the, um, police chief.
With, yeah, whoever the annual town meeting planning committee is.
He's already been to the elementary school, and we measured the gym, and we measured the cafeteria. Uh, the gym was not going to work, and the cafeteria, i- it is really tight. If they get, if they get eighty, eighty more people, um, i- it's really tight.
Yep, yep. So that's the latest. I'd love them to just at least get the initial thing done in, 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 um, June, and then, you know, we've got the rest of the summer when the state finally comes up with what they're doing to prepare for further cuts if they come, but it, it is what it is, we wanna, it's, it's stressful for everyone, so whatever they need to do, they'll do. But they certainly will appreciate hearing, and, and, and with your okay, um, I did, again, I told them what my recommendation would be tonight, but I didn't give them the detailed list, I'm, I'm happy to send that to them so they know, you know, what we did to get here and, and, and where we are in the holding pattern like everyone else. So, um, I think, given that, I'm sorry, I totally forgot what the initial question was. At some, some point in June, we're going to, they're gonna do at least the initials, even if it's just to open and delay it, there'll be something in June. So, you know, it's easy enough for us to say sometime before June thirtieth, we could come back together and take the vote. If, you know, if it looks like I'm gonna need more than a hundred fifty thousand, or you can just take the vote right now to allow thirty thousand dollars to go back to the town and do whatever it takes to get there.
Kyle, what are your thoughts?
I guess if we're going to meet anyway, maybe we just wait on the vote part, just in case something changes, but it doesn't sound like that eighty thousand shortfall's going to change, but unless you guys wanna just to have the vote to be done with that part of it and move on, I'm, I'm okay either way. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm fine, I feel thirty thousand is probably reasonable.
I agree.
If you all feel comfortable that that's where you're gonna end it and you're comfortable with it, then I'd suggest take the vote to get it out of the way, saying that, you know, in general, you know, that you support leaving a balance of thirty, of at least thirty thousand dollars um, from the fiscal twenty budget.
Andy, are you good with that?
Yep.
All right, then I'll, I'll make a motion then to leave at least a balance of thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Karen, add and, and use additional school choice dollars if needed.
Perfect.
A second?
All right, so we'll do a roll call again, Hill, yes?
Cunningham, yes?
Done, yes.
All right.
Alrighty.
Was that everything?
That is everything for tonight, and we will keep you all posted as we hear anything or don't hear anything. Um, but no, a- anything we hear both at the local level as well as on the state level, if we hear any whispers, we'll certainly share what we're hearing.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And you will need to roll call to adjourn.
All right. Uh, Hill, yes?
Cunningham, yes?
Done, yes.
All right, have a great night, everybody.
Thank you much.
Thanks, everybody.
Monday.